At least I'm pretty confident here.
Andrew, mine's it's just flapping red. Sorry. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I'll speak loudly. Okay, there I am. Welcome to our joint council and planning. There we go, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone that's here. I think this is really good for us to meet together with all of you and discuss some of these things that we end up making decisions about. So, thank you for being here. We'll go ahead and start with the discussion on the proposal for large-scale solar code amendment. And I don't know, Brandon, are you gonna do that?
I'm Connor.
Oh, you're Connor. Sorry. Everyone knows how well I see, sorry.
Yeah, so this is for the large-scale solar amendment. If you'll remember about this time last year, we had another meeting on this and it's just kinda grown from there. The main changes from that, I believe, are now that we have some more definitions that are being added. And then past that, it's becoming an entire chapter versus trying to amend existing code. Just because it's a little bit simpler that way. We're gonna leave this on the ground until y'all. And then there's just red lines in there, just points of discussion we'd like to touch on. Past that, yeah. Basically, the first step in that is solar facilities kinda vary in scale. Some can be relatively small and then some can be up to 150 megawatts. So in this case, in this case, it's a little bit weird because the existing code we have basically has a jump from, it supplies one house to this very large-scale thing. So we're almost thinking about adding a couple of steps in there. I know that Planning Commission had some concerns about solar facilities that kinda serve as pivots or other forms of agricultural equipment. That's the concern is they don't want that to fall under that impact farmers and agriculture, basically. So that's the first one. There is a book, Solar at Scale. Basically, it's a guidebook for local government. And essentially, it recommends community-scale solar and then utility-scale solar. Keep in mind that these are very much, much smaller than the projected size of this facility. Like I said, and Cole's here, he could probably talk more about it. Cole from the solar facility.
Okay, go back and remind us what this facility, what are we talking about that we had discussed a year ago? Like, give us some basics.
Essentially, for a very large-scale facility in terms of solar. I think Cole said it would be about 150 megawatts, 600 acres and things like that, so a fairly sizable facility. And that was kinda the whole idea is, kind of getting that in code because there's just nothing in code that would even allow us to regulate that or permit it or anything like that.
So that's what we're working on with the Planning Commission is to try and set that code so that as other projects come, that we have something that's a standard?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, perfect.
So that's kinda the idea behind it. That's why I think doing that step idea is kinda a good idea. Because like I said, going from a single house to 150-megawatt, 600-acre thing is quite the step. So we're just kinda wondering if, how Planning Commission and council would feel about adding a couple of those separate steps in there. So, less than five megawatts, but one to 20 acres, not 20 acres or more. Essentially, do you wanna see something between that one house and 150-megawatt, 600-acre facility? Be interested in seeing that in the actual ordinance amendment itself.
We've seen in, across the state, what have we, do you know? Can you speak to that? I'm sorry.
There's a couple of facilities out there. I know there's one in Randolph. We've been looking at that one, kind of having that guide, the general perspective we have on this upcoming one. Keep in mind, it's still a smaller facility than what's projected. But solar is starting to come to the state and even surrounding communities.
We visited one down to Castle Dale a couple of weeks ago. And it's, the interesting thing about Randolph is the minute you crest over Laketown Canyon, you see the mass of it. It's in a square, contained area. But Castle Dale's really interesting how they've done it. They just like chase the nooks and the crannies. It's, it's really weird their layout. It's not a square, great big field. It's
But it all comes together.
It's just like heribery where it's like a worm or a spider. It's really weird. I don't know if that was because of visual. Cause I don't even know, I, I don't have any idea, but one thing that I just find interesting that Connor's talking about too is location. You can't really pick and choose where you put them because you gotta be by a transmission line. Or it's not effective. So anyhow.
If I could just give a little input, I work all around the state and there are a lot. It's, it's not a small, a small number in the state. They're all over southern Utah. And they're, they're a major impact on the, on the area. If you take a look at that one over at Sage Junction, I used to hunt jackrabbits over there. And there were sage grass and all of that and, and they both basically go in and clear it. And spray it till it's, till nothing will grow, put down mag chloride so that it won't get dust. And it's, it's a pretty massive thing. And so the que, the question I would like to ask in there is, is why do we want to even consider this at this point? Is that, you know, I think that bears asking, is this something-
Do we have better use for our land?
Yeah, that's, that's really my, my question is, is this something that, that we really want to entertain in our county? Because what I've seen around the state has been pretty, pretty massive impact. I, I look at some of the things that get our hackles up, you know, storage units and, and scrapyards and things. And this has as much or probably much more impact on our community visually, from environmental standpoint, all of that. I just ask that if we, if Rocky Mountain Power came in and said we wanna put in 150-megawatt coal-fired, gas-fired power plant, what would the discussion be then? It would be a much bigger discussion at that point. And, and we wouldn't be talking public infrastructure overlay. Looking at, well, this is an industrial, anyway. That's, that's my major question on that is, is this really something that we even want to entertain? Because the impacts are pretty massive.
So, on that topic, how much of the energy generated would serve the local area?
Yeah, for sure.
I mean, do we, do we know the answer to that?
Is that already sold, is that energy sold to California or some other market?
So, first as far as-
Could you say your name, please?
Sorry, my name's Cole Stocker. I work for a company called Anell Green Power. We're the company that is developing this project. It's called Honeystone Solar Project. The first thing you mentioned as far as like spraying and killing everything so it doesn't grow, that's not gonna happen here. We generally, we have to clear for construction and then we replant native grasses underneath the plants. Or underneath the panels. So it doesn't have that much impact on the ground. And then after 40 years, in our leases, it's set, so we have to go back and completely restore the land to previous conditions. So it'll be farmland at the end of the facility, once again. So the impacts to the actual land are actually not bad at all. Cause you think it's kind of, you know, giving that soil a break from intensification every year. There's no water used whatsoever. And then it's all natural grasses underneath the panels. If you're talking about, you know, a coal-fired power plant, another thing you'd consider here is air quality in the valley, which is always an issue, and that would not be an issue here. As far as the electricity being used, it's going on Pacific Core lines, which are running through the facility. And that would be power that would likely be used in Utah. We haven't gotten into like commercial conversations that are, you know, to where I could guarantee where that power's going, but in all likelihood, where it's going on Pacific Core lines, it's going to be used locally. So.
I have a question for you. Have you done any other projects in the state of Utah, your company?
Our company has not, no.
You have not?
No, we're, we're, we're in, we've got some projects in the Northwest, in Colorado, a lot in Texas, the middle part of the country.
But not here in Utah?
Not here in Utah, yet.
Are any of the other projects you have done this size, 600 acres, have you done one that, to that scale?
Yeah, a lot of our projects are actually larger. This is one of our smaller projects that we're working on. Generally, we, we rarely go below like 100 megawatts on a project. This is one of our lower-level ones. I've worked on some elsewhere with other developers that are 300, 500 megawatts, that are much, much larger than this. But this project's done all its environmental diligence already. There's no real habitat concerns, there's no wetland concerns, these kind of things that we've already looked at. So as far as environmental impact, I, I do wanna clarify that this, this facility will have a minimum impact on, on that land.
Does anyone else have questions?
My question was just about the impact or if there are industry regulations regarding proximity and impact on airport operations?
Yes, we do, we do studies. We work with the FAA and those kind of things on, on those. We, we've looked at this one. It's, there is an airport just to the north of this facility and that is something that we, that we work with with our design and our diligence beforehand.
So, I think that's just something going forward as the county. We just wanna make sure that that's sufficient and the, and the industry standards are sufficient for our specific airport and situation in the valley.
Where the site, the location is that you-
Yes, it's, uh, it's north of Valley View and it's just to the west of Culver Reservoir, along that, that side, so.
Is that the best or only location for it in this valley? Has it gotta be along that transmission line?
It's prevalent.
For 1900 to Geller?
Yeah, so, so one thing when it comes for siding is, yeah, you're, you're correct. You wanna be as close to the transmission lines as possible, cause otherwise you need to build a giant high line, which is very expensive to try to connect to the lines. Another thing that goes into the siding effort is the actual capacity of the lines available. Because if the lines don't have capacity, you have to put hundreds of millions of dollars into upgrades. And this is an issue for all power plants regardless of generation.
Anybody else have questions? Thank you. So Connor, have you guys already drafted a, like a draft form of the ordinance that you would like to pass to put into code? Or are you still working on it?
Some of your packets.
I didn't see that.
Never saw it.
You brought spares?
Did Mark think he saw it?
I never, I said I never saw it.
She sent it out about 3:30.
Andrew sent it?
Was it email?
Here it comes.
Okay. Sorry, we haven't seen this, so. Have you guys, you guys have all seen this?
Most of, he's added some stuff since our last meeting.
Yeah, just kinda amended.
Everything in red is new.
You wanna pass, maybe do you want to see what, you wanna print a copy of what we're looking at?
I think Mr. Waterston brings up that point, is this something we want in our valley right now? If it is planned for it, if not?
Well, I wonder, okay, the benefits. It's supposedly clean energy, but will that cut our energy costs here versus what is going to be as far as a visual impact?
Yes.
And where does the demand sit?
What's the layer on Logan?
Bingo.
Yeah, it, it, cause most of the county is, is Rocky Mountain Power, am I not correct? Who, who does Pacific Core provide power to here in our county?
Hires are own, Logan's are own.
Everybody else.
Everyone else, I think, is.
Is Rocky Mountain-
Provide it to those two cities too, because they can't.
Mayor Danes is here too.
Oh, okay.
I remember the original map, it was this whole-
Mayor Danes in the back.
Yes, Mayor Danes, would you come up and, and address this?
Are we talking about this?
Holly Danes, I'm just here listening to the conversation because, as you know, with the Electrify Everything, we all, Rocky Mountain Power, Logan City, hire them everyone, we just have additional power demand, demand. And we've actually been having conversations that Logan City could be interested. I mean, depending on the pricing, and we, none of us have gotten that far, but we're following the discussion and we could potentially be interested in purchasing 10 megawatts, which is a pretty significant amount. It is clean energy, again. You have to balance that with, you know, your baseload energy. And we're, we're doing some things to do that as well with some natural gas generators we're adding. But, again, there, there are always impacts, but it is clean energy. And we at least are interested in potentially purchasing some of that if the plant is permitted and built, so.
Little perspective there? Thank you. Okay. So, if we pa, we're passing this code that would be applicable to any other pro, if we pass this code, it would be applicable to any projects that came in, so we need to really discuss. I, I would like to see more about what potential impacts. I mean, I know they're, they're saying that there aren't any, but can we see that quantified? Are there other places where you've done one that you can provide us that information where they say that that really truly was not an impact? I think the impacts need to be something that we really look at and not just say, I don't think there is any, or I think there is, like where's the, is there some data that we can look at? And I don't know if you guys, you guys have obviously been talking about this more before us. Have you looked into that?
And I think at least for me, looking at it, some of the impacts as, as I've driven around the state too, like Jason, is, is the visual impact of any of them in the state is pretty significant. Right, there's, there's big ones all across the state. And, and on this one, if, as you come out of Logan Canyon, look across the valley, you're gonna see 500-plus acres of
Reflection.
Reflection, and whether, whether that glares or not, right, they can tilt it different and they, they can, they can take some of that glare away, but it's still gonna be a massive area of, of black or whatever color you see that as. And then, and then even the, the seeding of it, right, a lot of them do use the, the spray and they, they kill everything out. And they're gonna try to establish native grass. But a couple of the farmers on here that have tried to establish CRP, after you've cropped a field, the success rate on that is, is fairly low, right? It takes years to get that in place and then you have to manage it. Right, if you want that, you, you can't just plant the grass and expect it to rejuvenate for 40 years. If you're not mowing that or grazing that or doing something with it, you're not doing the soil any good. You're, you're better to just keep farming it. And so I think those impacts, from my perspective, the visual is the biggest one, right? Right along Valley View, it's basically Valley View Highway to Benson Marina Road on, on the west side of Culler, right? That's a pretty big area in a visual impact from almost anywhere in the county, right? You're not gonna see it if you're in Clarkston or in Lewiston, but a lot of the rest of the county, you're gonna see that. And so, yeah, that was one of my questions is, is do we want something of that scale as a visual, appealing or non-appealing aspect of, of Cache County?
The majority that we, of these that you see around the state are in very remote areas. They're basically out in desert.
And, and he had, he had some great pictures of the ones they've done around the country. But most of those are on very flat ground, right? So you build a row of tree around, trees around them and you can't see them from anywhere. You can't do that here. You can put a row of trees around it and not see it if you live across the street, but anywhere else, you're still gonna see that, I think.
I have a question. When this was brought before the council, at one time, there was a concern about lithium and how the, it would be-
Battery storage.
Yeah, battery storage. Has anything been discussed about that or any, you know, any?
I think they've been meeting with the fire department on that to, to, they've been, they've been meeting with the fire marshal to, to see how they're gonna address that, to make sure they're gonna be in compliance with that aspect of it. Cause that was concern we had too, is, is that aspect, but I think they've, they've got that part addressed.
It is, it's in a, you know, it's in a remote, more remote area, so if you did have these fires, but there have been very significant fires in battery storage facilities around the country, some of which they couldn't put the fire out for nearly a month. And they, they pour concrete on, on these wet concrete to try to put out these lithium battery fires. And so, you know, the, the technology is coming along. It's another hazard to bring into the valley and if you do have those fires, what are the, what is in the smoke coming off of, of that type of a fire?
That was gonna be my other question. What kind of impact does it have on the air quality and different things?
Brett, can I put you on the spot and ask you if you could give us an idea of what it would do to property tax values on that land as compared to, like, how would that work?
Well, I, I believe the panels and the equipment is reported as personal property. So they report that as personal property and appreciate it, according to that. So, as far as the property itself, it would get, it would get taxed the same rate as anything else, but it does, it does appreciate. I don't remember what the schedule would be.
And not that that's a huge part of the discussion.
If you're asking about the surrounding area, yeah. On the value of land.
Up or down? You think it would make it, other values go down?
Well, I mean, zoning is a huge issue. I don't know if that's an issue. There's a lot of factors there. I mean, trans, I mean, even transmission lines can affect value, so I mean, I think a residence would have a negative value, negative downward. So the residences in that area, I would-
That's, that's great, thank you. I know you weren't prepared to, to talk about.
Just one other real quick thought, that's interesting to think about too. We've been fortunate the last few years that we haven't had the so-called inversion. There's had been years that seems like for 90 or 120 days out of the winter, you can't even see that country or the sun's not gonna see them panels. So, I don't know if that's been taken into consideration as well. On a good year, this last year, it wouldn't have been a lot of problem, but I remember years where you can't see 20 feet in front of you going out through there.
You're speaking to power they would generate and, or would potentially not be able to generate if it's obscured?
They wouldn't be able to, if they didn't have sun. But that would be the developer's problem.
The nearest large facility to something like this is, is that the one in Promontory?
Uh, there's one in Portage.
Is that one closer?
Probably the closest.
Is Randolph closer than?
Portage, yeah, Portage would probably be the closest.
That's pretty big.
Cause those could be resources potentially to inquire about.
And if you compare where Portage is as far as density, people, big difference when we're comparing here in the valley, so.
And a very different environment to Cache Valley versus, the bottom of Cache Valley versus-
What I keep looking at is the size and scope of this, starting in Cache Valley. I mean, we've talked about having a solar panel in a cornered field, so the pivot and everything else and that, that uses ground that's not being used, and I see that's good. But something of this size and scope, and just like we've talked, is this what we want in the valley from a visual concept and stuff? I understand the power is clean, but there's a balance. And we've gotta decide that is, what do we want in the valley from that standpoint?
Also, we have some of the lowest energy rates, which is nice, I think. I'm in Logan City, I think ours is 11 and a half cents per kilowatt hour. I know places, California was alluded to earlier, can be near double that. If, if I have a facility like this and I can sell it to someone who's gonna pay more money, that's probably where I'm gonna sell it, just the economics of it. So, I, I don't know if in the code, if we can say anything about first right of refusal or certain percentage has to be returned locally. But that would be something I'd be interested in learning more about.
Yeah, if we're gonna give up the, the ground or the-
Yeah, cause off, off times you'll see locations give up their resources where, you know, the tax benefit is enjoyed, but beyond that, not much. Sometimes the residents don't always see all the benefit.
Connor, was, is the process that you guys would finish refining this, then take it to the Planning Commission and they would make a recommendation to us, so we're not in that, this is not completed even yet?
Yeah, this is trying to get more information, so it's basically at the very rough stage right now.
Okay.
Now it's just trying to refine it to where if you wanna pass, you can pass it. I'll have far more experience and perspective than I do, so I like hearing that, so I can refine it more. Yeah, that's just kinda where it's at. That's the purpose of the workshop, is just kinda get a grand scheme around. Everybody here is gonna be the one that's involved in passing it, so.
I really like Keegan's idea, if you could write that into the code, that a certain percentage of it, like first right of refusal, or at least it has to be made available to local, if it even passes, but if that, but to me, that would be-
But it's, it sounds to me like you're in favor of it, which I'm not saying it's bad, but what if the majority is not in favor of it? How do we, how do we test that before we go, before we go make it happen?
I personally don't feel like I'm informed enough to say yay or nay at this stage. I, I would consider this the information gathering stage. I'd like to know that-
I think what you said though was extremely important. If it does happen, is that we need to recognize that on the usage or access here.
Should we do that though?
Yeah, I was gonna say, that seems hard to do to a private business in the code.
It's like telling a farmer, you can only sell your cows to this place here, or whatever. I'm wondering about that.
Just about to say the same thing.
I know, we talk a lot about personal rights.
To put on someone as a private company.
I don't know, I mean-
There, there you go.
Okay, yeah, you're right.
I mean, I get it, but-
Except it sounds good.
But we also, yeah, don't impede on the businesses that come in with other licenses.
Yeah.
And their practices.
That's true. Cause we are giving up something of the, you know, of our viewscape and, I mean, there is a cost to the community.
Do we have any of our legal?
Yep, Andrew's here.
Andrew? Tell us what you think.
Yes, bottom line is, I don't know the answer off the top. I would think it, my initial thought is, I'm a little concerned. I wanna verify that we could do that. And there's some practicality considerations as well, like I don't know if it's feasible enough to defer to the developer on that, cause he said, depending on the lines, whatever. I know, it sounds like it may be possible, but whether or not it's legal, I need to do a little bit of research on that. I can get back to you on that.
Thank you. You know, before we go any further, I did not introduce our planning commissioners to the, to the public that may be watching, and I apologize for that. Would you guys just really quick?
Maybe turn around, so it's not just the back of your heads.
We don't wanna be spread.
Is that your better side? That's your better side, okay.
My name is Brady Chris. Nathan Downs.
Val J. Rigby.
Jason Waterston.
Thank you, thank you. I apologize for that. I should've done that earlier. Okay, does anybody else have questions for Connor?
Yeah, they were.
Do you, how about planning commissioners? Tell us what questions you have of us or of Connor as part of this discussion. You've already obviously talked about it a little bit.
Well, I mean, you, you heard that a lot of the planners are really concerned about how it affects, you know, what we're looking at and whether we wanna cite it here. But having just recently spoke to somebody who's planning a project down in the NeFIE area, you know, if we were to cancel their project, we'd be really infringing on their private property rights and their right to do what they want with their land. And for them, this is from very low productivity land. They have a difficult time growing a crop on it, so it makes sense in this area, in that area, there south of NeFIE, for them to do something like this. And so I would hate for us to say, no way in the county do we want it. I think it's better to, to build in what we do want a, as we look at this because, you know, we do affect people's rights to do what they want with their land. And so I, I think we gotta be really thoughtful as we say, no, absolutely not, we don't want it in Cache Valley. I think that would be unwise to, to say no. We would really infringe on people.
So in that vein, do we, um, do we talk about size? So we don't want large scope, that it's just gonna be a giant reflection that we see as, as, you know, impacting viewscape, because that does impact so many people within the county? Or, and how do we mitigate some of the negative things, but also allow people to use their property? Cause that's what we're constantly doing, is that give and take, right? Of allowing people to exercise their property rights, but also mitigate the, the negative impacts on, on other people.
I think though, we can address that in the zoning request, right? They're still gonna have to do a zoning change. And, and zoning change, you guys can deny that based on public input. If, you know, if the public's against it, that's all it takes to deny it potentially. And so those big ones, you could still deny. But I think having a code in place for even these smaller, the 1 to 20-acre ones, right? If someone puts in six pivots and wants to put all their pivot corners into that to, to run their operation, right? Currently, they can't do that because it doesn't fit under home use. And so having that code in place, I think is good.
So setting up this code doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna approve ourselves?
It doesn't mean you're gonna approve a 600-acre project, right? They'll, they'll come in for the zoning request after this is approved and we'll, we'll recommend denial or approval and then you guys will approve or deny it ultimately based on input.
Thank you.
I think it's good to have that code in place.
If I can just jump in real quick.
If the original question and reason, I'm sorry, for, for this being on the agenda, was determine whether or not we should move forward in developing a proposal for code, I think I'd say yes, we should.
I agree.
And, and I would just say, what, I think what Connor's done here to add, and staff, to add some scale, different levels of scale. I think that's a pretty important, important distinction there, so you can allow these things. I mean, I, I think it makes sense in a lot of, in a lot of ways, but a massive scale thing that's gonna impact a huge percentage of the, of the residents of this county, I think is something that really has to be thoughtfully considered.
So you would have different stipulations for, a different code for, like a different size, the zone would be different.
And, and you may have viewscape requirements in that for, you know, once it reaches a certain size, it needs to be outside of, uh, outside of an area where, where it's gonna have visual impacts on whatever population.
Yeah, so an option on that front, you could basically have smaller ones be a conditional use permit inherently, a conditional use permit inherently. And you can also, if you get larger, you can start requiring like the public infrastructure overlay, which this would require, so you can kinda set it backward on that, basically, that way, that's an option.
Yeah, okay. I think, I think we're probably all in agreement that yes, move forward with some of those, um, thoughts and ideas in mind, and we'll really rely on you guys for a recommendation too. Like, I will, we really try and take that pretty seriously when we get information from the planning commission, so.
It would also be nice to reach out to those counties that, like Jason's referred to, that have those megascope things, and what's been the inputs that's been in there? I mean, I agree with Val J on property rights, I very much wanna protect them, but we also have to look at the types of businesses we want in our areas, as how that meets our environment and what's going on. I mean, this is good for the environment, but is it good for the whole area? And so I.
There's a balance.
There's a balance, and.
We only cite scrap yards in certain areas.
Exactly.
So if I'm in, you know.
I mean, because, I mean, maybe you start looking at a density, I mean, we've described, just like Brady said, this is gonna be seen from nearly everywhere. But at the same time, when we talk about those other large scales ones out there, what is the residential population in so many areas or so many miles that would be impacted by that? So, um, so you start to see that.
All right, Connor, does anybody have any more questions before we move on to the next subject? Thank you so much, Connor, and thank you, Cole. Okay, um, discussion of water and subdivisions, who's gonna?
Are we not doing short-term rentals?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I don't, I see double.
I skipped that one. Okay, short-term rentals, um, who's gonna?
Andrew was drawing up a, a part on this, right?
I've worked with Steven Nelson on the draft ordinance, I'm just double checking right now, is it in the packet? It looks like it is the one.
Yours is in the packet that we got?
I believe there is a draft in the packet we got, a draft ordinance.
Yeah, so I just forwarded an email to county council members that I'd sent out to planning commissioner earlier.
Yeah, we've seen it before.
Okay, this is the same.
Yeah, seven minutes ago, probably. It'll have a link to a Google shared drive with some supporting documents for the workshop. Sorry, we got them together kind of late. We weren't sure exactly the scope of the discussion, uh, but yeah, I did put in the, what I found. It was a draft short-term rental that.
Well, the scope of the discussion comes from, um, in Wellsville, there is kind of a barn, it was supposed to be a house, that did not sell as a house, and so the owners sold it to somebody else who does not even live in the valley, and they are now renting it out. I think I've talked with Jason and Fire on this issue, and I've talked with you, Andrew, on it, because there are nights, and I've actually gone down there before, it's in a residential area, and there are thirty to forty to fifty people at this place with seventeen to twenty-two cars at this place, and that just changes the residential atmosphere of what they want there. Now, I don't wanna take anybody's right to be able to rent your house if you're doing something, but it's a house, so we should have it with limits. I mean, I think in your code, you talked about that'd be one car per bedroom. When you talk about a septic tank, the septic tank is based on how many bedrooms are in the house, but some of these rentals are packing people in there to the point that it just deteriorates the neighborhood. And so, we need to have something in our code that helps protect, cause if you move into a neighborhood and that's right next door to you, I mean, these people have even described that the renters come into their garage, take their hoses and use their water, I mean, we need to have some control here, so.
Is this in Wellsville, or is this in county?
It's in the county, it's just out north of Wellsville boundary.
It's a rental or a Gypsy compound where you described it?
I mean, go to Airbnb and, and it's just a problem, but yeah, it's personal property, back to that personal property, but their personal rights are affecting other persons' property rights when it's the parking and everything else inside of there. So, Andrew's, you started on that, and I thought it was good, because we limited based on, um, homes and the, I mean, the homes, bedrooms, and then if there was a private drive, we couldn't even allow it, right?
Correct, I believe the draft was for no tenant, guest, or other person visiting short-term rentals.
They don't see any that looks like a draft.
Where was that?
Right here, so this one, no short-term rentals allowed.
Yeah, if you scroll down to where it has a use type forty-three twenty, that would be where, um, the new language would be inserted for short-term rental.
It only goes to forty-three hundred, the one I.
It's on, uh.
But if they've got one of those private rules.
It's on the first table, like about halfway down on the second page.
Is Steve here, Reader?
Um, out this week.
Cause he's our enforcement code, that guy would have a lot of background on this, because.
Yeah, I believe it is a point of frustration for him that we don't really have anything on the books right now that he can actually enforce.
Angie, they, they had a map with all the short-term rentals in the valley on it, and there was a few hundred probably, on that map.
Yeah.
And, and probably ninety, ninety-five percent of the complaints come from one. And so we're, we're writing this code because of one, but it, there'll be others that come up, I think, down the road.
Right. I'd also, I'd also bring up on, on this, it's, it's because of the problem why we're having the discussion, the vast majority that we don't have issues with. But this one, in my, in my estimation, seems a lot more like a recreational facility than it does.
Residential.
A short-term, a short-term rental.
Right.
You know, because it's, it's not only.
Big events there.
Cause they're having events, weddings.
Wouldn't be allowed, wouldn't be allowed under this code.
And, and I wonder if that's, if that's also a different angle we should look at and say, the type of business that's happening here is a lot more like a recreational business than it is a, a short-term rental.
Well, Jason, if you wouldn't mind, you putting what your thoughts is, because this affects firefighting?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I agree with you, but on the other hand, if we're gonna allow these, we need to at least, um, do inspections on them, treat them like a business, and not a, a resident, as a residential home, even though it is. Just for the fact that, um, they do, residential homes do require smoke detectors, and, and, you know, the access and stuff like that to the, to the property, so. Yeah, I, 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 we're just not capturing it right now. I mean, I don't know, I mean, business licenses, I mean, the money that we're, we could capture from these, it's not a lot, but it's something, you know? Plus.
Well, and let's the neighboring residents know the county is enforcing and looking and doing something, because, just like you said, most rentals are good, because it's four cars or whatever else and fifteen people, but this is.
Yeah, this seems like it's beyond scope of, of rental, it's an event center.
Exactly.
That has a hotel on it attached.
And that's why we talked about even having levels in this at one of the discussions, right? If there was a, you know, a, a certain threshold, whether that's eight or ten people that could stay there, just a business license would be required, because I, I do think that the yearly fire inspections, you know, are probably important to have. And then if they go over that, it's a conditional use permit, and then it catches these bigger ones that are wanting to do more than just have people stay there. And so then they would potentially have to get that conditional use permit and have a, but those small ones that, yeah, you never get a call on, uh, they still have a yearly inspection by the fire marshal, and, and they have a business license, so that the county's capturing some of that, and.
And, and the good thing about it is, if we've got eyes on it, then we can tell when things are changing.
Yeah.
That maybe shouldn't be changing, uh, on the property, um, that's, that's why we do business inspections, cause business changes something, it's like, hey, you know, you need to probably get a permit for that to change it and whatnot. So, we can, we actually keep an eye on these, these short-term rentals to see if they're just, you know, doing what they're supposed to, if they're adding on, or if they're doing different things that we noticed that maybe they shouldn't be doing.
Do we currently have a code that regulates? We don't have any regulation.
Allowed, because there's no, nothing that says they are or not.
Julie, do you want, do you have something you wanna share with us about, um, your knowledge of short-term rentals, or?
I think it's really good to have this conversation, but I think the conversation also needs to be expanded to a larger perspective, looking at, like you said, it's tricky, because people's personal property and what you can dictate, they can do, but my counterparts in Park City and in Bear Lake, um, and in Colorado, have talked about how their communities have literally been destroyed, because people from usually California, investors come in by the property, they don't live there, and then they just have a short-term rental. And so the whole feel of a community is gone, because the people who are supposed to be living there aren't there, and they don't care, they don't participate in the community, they don't participate in politics.
And that's, may I interrupt, that's the exact situation we're dealing with in the Wellsville area. These people live in Arkton.
And I, yeah, I really, I agree about that, um, that possible transition. Uh, we've talked also with, with Matt and Brett about people out there who aren't even registered with, um, Airbnb and others that are just operating under the radar, so another component of this discussion needs to be, you know, Matt says, my guys see stuff, so we know who they are, but, so we've got to internally maybe get a better system too, where we're reporting what those are and, and who's doing them, so that they can be required to live up to the standards that everyone else has. So those are a couple of concerns that I have.
Do they pay transient room tax? They're not paying the transient?
Yes.
You're through any of those.
If it's collected by VRVO or Airbnb.
If it goes through the, the apps, the major apps, the VRVO, and that, that automatically comes out, right?
Yeah, and the thing that's hard for us is when we get that, that transient room tax collection, it's one clump from Airbnb, it doesn't itemize who's paying. So we don't know who's really honestly registered, unless you clicked on Airbnb and just looked at all of their listings.
And that's the map that Angie brought up. I, I don't know where they got that from, but it had a dot of every one of, from all the different sites in the whole county. And so you could verify that off wherever they got that.
Does that, cause we went down at one of the conventions, and they have.
But at the same time, you know, how many of you travel now and use Airbnb instead of a hotel?
Yeah.
Most of us, right? Most, a lot of people would rather stay in some of those places, and so I think having, having a way to get them all licensed and regulated.
What do most municipalities do?
And you could limit that too, to, to where they had to live, you know, within so many miles of it, or onsite, or.
For example?
Yeah, what do municipalities do?
They limit the total number of them, first of all, and then you do have to have a business license.
Some municipalities, some of them I don't think have anything.
And proximity, it varies, the proximity to each other.
And then they have, like, and the nibblies, and then they have to do the fire code, so when they renew their business license, they have to go and get it, the inspection for the fire and two other things, just to make sure that they're doing that.
Yeah, Logan City, it's within five hundred feet of another one, there has to be, for how many bedrooms there are, there has to be enough parking for, like, there's, yeah, there's all kinds of stuff like that.
And it varies really widely from one place to another. You know, Springdale at the mouth, at the entrance to.
Giant.
Park, they, they said, we're not gonna have a, have a town, because you can get thousands of dollars a night for these houses, so everybody's gonna move out. And so, so they tried to really regulate, I mean, well, they tried to ban them to start with. The legislature floated a bill that basically guided local governments that they, or that said, regulate. It didn't pass, but that was kinda what the legislature was saying, was back off local government agencies. And so I think, I think what we've talked about is, is kinda coming to a, not massive regulation, but a minimal, hey, we need to know who you are, that you're in business, you need to have a business license, and you need to pay your transient room tax, and, and, and those things. And then look at those larger facilities that are really look, that really look a lot more like a recreational business, and handle them, however we decide to do that. Whether it's under the existing code for, for recreational, um, operation, or something in a, in a code for short-term rental.
I have a question for Brett. So, like in this instance, that home, they're not living there, so how is that taxed from a standpoint as far as the exemption on a residential and everything else? Does that make sense?
Yeah, we would invite, our officers would invite anybody to let us know if that is happening. We don't always know, but we, over time, we do pick those up, and every year, at least a couple, we find, discover, just either the public or staff, staff of Cash County, maybe Melon Services, or somebody lets us know, and we find that.
So if we did a code such as that, would that help trigger that knowledge, or what?
Yeah, for sure, I mean, if they have to get.
License and everything else.
It would trigger, it would trigger something, but they often will just, you know, they're, if you go visit these websites, you'll see that it's anything from, you know, these big things to some, somebody.
People renting out tree.
One single bedroom in their, in their home, and they may only be there for a couple of weekends, a year. And so, and then they may put it on the website and then pull it off, and so we are monitoring those websites, but um, not every minute of every day, so when they, they come and go, we try to, we try to check on that. Um, there are websites, um, not just Granicus, there's others, but, and, or we can do that ourselves, I've talked with our IT department, they can literally go out and strip this data off the web, and we can do that in-house, but all of that takes resources. The state has, um, has a subscription to Granicus, and so we're getting some of that data that will help, help, help us to, to move these properties from primary to a secondary status, so that they'll be taxed, and not get the residential.
Legislature did pass a code though that said that you can't regulate just because somebody advertises on one of the, one of those, that you have to have evidence that they're actually doing business.
The listing is insufficient evidence.
Yeah.
I think, um, going what Jason mentioned, we can't over-regulate this, because then the incentive is, they're gonna try to go underneath the radar. So if we make it so that we say there's a minimum requirements of a business license, and inspection, and parking, you know, something that's quite, not so granular, but, but pretty basic, then at least that they'll come and register, and we keep it, so that they'll, they'll keep it current, and then we at least have an, an accurate, hopefully somewhat accurate list of of who is, is having these, and then those that aren't falling into this, obviously it's Wellsville one, I just looked at it on Airbnb, it, that is a rec center, is what that is, that, that.
Really, they're in a whole different class.
And hang out with.
You can't for the low, low price of a few thousand dollars.
Also have a, with a business license or a conditional use permit, that you can, that you can have an enforcement action on.
Yes.
And, and be able to revoke those things through a formal process, whereas if somebody's just out there, then we've gotta establish, yeah, they're doing this, and they're, and they're not meeting code this, this way.
The step one, we have to, we have to establish a short-term rental.
Code, yes.
Andrew, didn't you write that it would be a CUP in there?
The way the current draft is, yes, it would get approved to have this via CUP. And that can be changed however you want, right? That's just the current proposal out there, so.
The one we talked about earlier, that's what Steven put in there, but at the planning commission, we talked about having the smaller ones that just need a business license in those inspections. Then that bigger one that would be like this would have to go through the full CUP.
So was that based off of the number of bedrooms, the number of bathrooms? How do you say?
We, we were saying, based off the number of, of occupants that it said it was good for on, which, you'd look at the listing, or the number of bedrooms, you could do the same.
Yeah, but this one only says eight.
Yeah, yeah, and so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think in your draft, you said one car per bedroom is all that's allowed there?
Fourteen guests.
Correct, that is, that is the proposal. And like I said, with this, you have, you can pick from the menu options, how you wanna regulate, you can go full bore, basically eliminate them, or just permit them altogether, like it currently is, go somewhere in the middle, just take your pick on how you wanna do it, basically.
Just because I haven't heard it mentioned specifically, unless it was, I apologize. I believe some communities draw a pretty strong line between owner occupied or not owner occupied. Does someone have to be own, you know, living in that home a certain number of days a year in order to even allow the short-term rental at all? Right, is it an ADU, or is it a? Right, which sets a big difference between what's going on, the one in Wellsville, and others, and I'm not on the council, but I'm wondering about the business license for that kind of setting, where it's a family who's renting out on a short-term rental basis. Do they really need a business license? Just to rent a few? Right, and so, but that's, all can be looked at, right?
Well, those have to, like, I know with Logan City, just cause I was on their planning commission for a while, they required a license to, even to do an ADU, where you're gonna have your kids renting in your basement, or if it's owner occupied, it's a legal ADU, they still need you to be licensed.
Do you know if it's a business license, or are they licensing their short-term rental?
It's a landlord license.
It's a landlord license.
Okay, great.
You need a landlord license in Logan, for example, even on a long-term rental.
Yeah.
But we need to do something that brings the inspection like Jason's talking about, so that we're monitoring and watching that.
I think a license is a minimum.
Yeah. So, okay, we've got some other things we want. So, okay, we've got some other things we want to talk about. Does anyone have any other suggestions for the development services as you guys develop this code and bring it? Do you feel like you have enough information, Andrew? Do you have any other ques, does anyone have any other questions or comments?
I just have one quick question.
Please.
In relation, I really appreciate them putting this, uh, proposal together, but as we talked about, just one point there. If it's accessed from a private road, it's not possible. Well, this whole outfit we're talking about in Wellsville is accessed from a private road.
By the lane.
So then do we say grandfather or do we say start, scratch, it either fits or no?
I guess that's something that could be discussed.
That's legal.
I, I can see, you know, we talked about the, the private and I think, you know, and maybe in this situation that works. But I also think of some others that are in the, that are in the county operating now that go, you know, somebody owns a canyon or something like that. It's a private road that goes up there and those probably make a, a lot more sense because where's the impact, right? You know, they're driving, they're driving miles past where all of the people are and, and they've got a cabin up the, up a canyon somewhere they own. I, 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 that kind of concern.
Private drive going in there had some concerns.
Maybe there's a different way that we could, that we could look at that.
Quantify that or regulate it differently?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if just saying, eh, no private, eh, no private access, I think that, that might be problematic. But I don't, I don't have the, the answer of how you would, how you word that, but I think we can come up with something around that.
All right, anybody else? Thank you. That was, I think it's really good that we get this regulated and, because it's getting more and more prevalent. Okay, now we'll have a discussion about water subdivisions.
Again, I wasn't quite sure with the scope of the discussion.
I wanted to bring this up because Nate brought out an interesting point last time. The council, the planning and zoning just approved two very large subdivisions. We've never approved anything that large before. Water is a precious commodity and I know two people right now that have drilled well and got dry holes. And so you mentioned that maybe we could look at a water district if we talk about a subdivision of a certain size. Remember that? And I thought that was an interesting point rather than, I mean, Mount Sterling is looking at 40 additional wells being poked just on those two subdivisions right now. Plus there's the one in Hiram that's still going to come back around us. So we talked, we had, um, like, you guys remember, we had the state engineer come in before when we had a workshop? And he mentioned that in Box Elder County, if you do a certain subdivision, they make them drill a well to make sure there's water there first. I just wanted to open it up and have a discussion because if we don't start talking about this, it's going to be too late as we don't put anything in going down. Because, I mean, when I was on the planning and zoning, the largest subdivision was 11 homes, wasn't it? And this is double it and then we did two of them in one, plus we got another one coming. I just think we need to have a discussion and see what's there. I understand the county doesn't have much over water, but when the state engineer said the county could come up with some design to say, if you're going to do a subdivision of this kind, then you've got to meet this criteria. We're not saying no, but like a water district or something that just helps us for what we're facing. Cause, um, I just see the door is opened and it's going to keep coming.
Just, this doesn't address the whole issue of, of adequacy of that, but I, I wonder if there could be something in our code that said, once you reach a certain scale of subdivision, you have to provide a public water.
System.
That's what, yeah, that's.
And I, and I think the easiest way to do that, uh, and we'd have to do a little, right? Under state code currently, if there's five homes or more than 25 people on one well, you have to be a public water supplier. So we could model it after that, right? If it's a subdivision that's going to serve five or more homes, they got to put in one well and, and file with the state as a public water supplier.
Well, and the other thing I got thinking about.
Well, and that's why I say we'd have to look at some, right? If, if you've got a five lot subdivision on 200 acres and they're spread, you know, then it may, so I think we'd have to have a little further discussion. But these two are 20 lots clustered essentially, right? We're going to, we're going to drill 20 wells on one and a half to one and a quarter acre lots. That's hard, hard, and, and my concern is more for groundwater protection, right? The water supply in that location, there's a well right next door that irrigates all that off, it's a great well. I think the supply is there, but now instead of one hole, we're going to have 20, uh, that just have more possible ground. And, and none, none of those have to test their, their water, if you're in a single well, you don't have to do anything.
The other thing we got is one and a half acre lots, everybody has a well and everybody has a septic tank with Leach Field and everything else.
Right, they're all, they're all that, that's the contamination issues.
Yeah, we just had the issue in Wellsville Canyon where they're talking about a new septic tank system, which I think we also as a county ought to look if we're going to start clustering homes to see what's going on from there.
Yeah, those, those, those new septic systems totally treat the water onsite and you can discharge it. I mean, they're, they're great.
It helps in that area that we're going to be looking at. So that's why I wanted to discuss and so that we're, we got to do something to have an idea, whether it's water district or they have a test well or whatever out there. Because it's like a fishing license. You have a water permit, but you're not guaranteed water, so.
So there's, is there a current qualification, like before they apply for a subdivision, that they know for a fact that they have enough water for that many?
You just got to have a water right.
Water right, water permit.
That's the case with it. And even if it's a single home, right, you don't have to know you have water. If you're smart, you'll drill the well before you start your house, but.
This, this requires the, the developers to have some skin in the game. You're not just sell lots and say, good luck on finding water.
But see, that's being tested now too, on that higher one. So, which is going to be interesting because I've always felt that they should have the water right before they go forward, but we shall see.
So have you guys given specific direction to development services to help develop that kind of a code?
No, this is the first, this is the first talk of it, yeah. Nolan just wanted to, we, we were meeting anyway, so he thought.
Well, and we have the meeting with Brandon on what, July 2nd for the water group and that's going to.
Yeah, we got a meeting next week.
Tie into it, but I wanted everybody here thinking about it because we're limited, these guys are limited. They can't say nothing about water because it's done through the state. But yet the state did come in and give us an idea, okay, you could start doing some things like some Box Elder and some of these other areas that we ought to be considering. We ought to consider these, these new type of septic tanks that Nate talked, that we're seeing up in Wellsville Canyon. Because that could help on some of these clustering areas and stuff like that. Andrew, you were going to?
No, I, I was just going to say, I agree with that, Nolan. I mean, at this point, based on the way the county code is, like we talked about these last subdivisions that came in, if they meet all the requirements they have in county code, then they have to be approved, right? But if we want to put additional standards in play, whether it be water, septic, based on the number of the subdivision or whatever, and that's, we can certainly look at those options. And that way everyone knows ahead of time what those requirements are. And if they don't meet those requirements, then you can deny it at that point.
Well, here's an instance. So if you go to Bear Lake on the Idaho side and you put in a septic tank, you have to have separate piece of ground for another septic tank down the road in so many years in case this one fails or something happens to it.
You, you have to do that here.
Yes.
On your lot, you have to do this, we have to do that here too.
We just need to look at something that more protects our water source than what we're doing right now.
And, and part of this comes, yeah, Nolan said, we're meeting next, next week, uh, with Brandon Bell, the countywide planner, right? We're to, to add water as a component to the county's master plan as required by the legislature. And as a whole, Cache County, we have pretty good water supply. And in the county, our development is a small piece of the groundwater puzzle, right? The cities are going to annex, they're just going to pump more water. But we can control a little bit on some of these subdivisions because 20 homes here and 20 there, uh, unregulated, they can, they can pump a, a lot of water potentially. Maybe more than what their right is to irrigate that, but if they're a water supplier, now they're metered, now they're regulated. It helps to protect our supply and, and more so, I think, for our, our source, source water protection on those.
Well, like those two subdivisions in Mount Sterling, nearly doubled the amount of wells in Mount Sterling right now.
Yeah.
So.
They're already approved, so they're, they're going to drill anyways, but there'll be, there'll be more come.
And that's why it's, we need to be thinking as, as a county, how we're going to meet this from protecting the water and septic tanks and everything else. And if the water district or whatever we do, so.
Okay, anybody else want to weigh in on that or ask any questions?
I would say maybe one thing, if, if you really think that's a, a road you want to go down, right? We've already got two we approved. We have another one that's already in the queue, so they're already in the system. But does the, does the council want to, right, put a, a hold on any big subdivisions? And you decide what big is until we get this ordinance in place. I think that can go for up to six months or something, right? Just so, just so we have this, so we don't get three more.
Yep, well, Andrew, you and I talked about this because the debate is about whether that subdivision has to produce those water permits when they come in for a subdivision approval. And, and that's the holdup right now, isn't it?
That's holdup on that one.
So that, that, I'd say, I'd say it's a sec, I'd say it's a secondary thing. It's more like going to be the fire access issue, maybe anything. Now, when it comes to water, I think the, more or less, the question that came up is, do you need to show all the water rights when you submit your application in the beginning? And they've already conceded, okay, before it's fi, the final approval, that all has to be in their name. So ultimately, they're going to have to have water in the name before they can go record or anything along that, along those lines, if that makes sense. So I think the biggest issue is going to be the access issue that they're still working on, so.
Well, from a county standpoint, we need to sit back and say, okay, when I first got on the planning and zoning, we were told the county is not a, a provider of municipal services. And so if we start throwing these big subdivisions in the county, can we provide the services that the county is supposed to do? More road plows, more garbage pickup, ambulance service, all of those things, are we ready to do that? And that's why I, I agree with Nate. As a council, we need to decide what is the largest subdivision we want to see sitting in the county on the outskirts that, because really those subdivisions impact the municipalities they're next to more than anything. I mean, um, they're going to go to the Wellsville parks, they're going to go to the Wellsville school, all of those things.
We talked about higher district services a few weeks ago, same thing.
Yep, so.
If you remember, you know, we had a proposal in Petersburg years ago and the developer came in, it was for a couple hundred. But the developer said, we vision this as being the next Eagle Mountain City. And in Petersburg, where we know we have very limited water supply and, and distance to all of these resources that Nolan's talked, talked about. It's not unprecedented that we, that we could have these massive proposals here and, and we need to be prepared for.
But, but right now, if they come in, we have to take them.
Yeah.
And it's one meeting, so we, we really might want to think about giving ourselves some time to think further.
I, I would be in favor of that, like a six-month moratorium on, what did you say? The largest one had been 11?
Eleven.
Like, anything, I don't know.
That's my memory, isn't it? It's 11, right?
I don't want it to be arbitrary.
Larger one passed in Petersburg.
Yeah, way bad.
Twenty-ten, probably, um, that, that was a, a larger one, David, probably. The fours and the fives were probably.
I remember that, remember it was also water quality.
Yeah.
That was, you know, strict nine and they, they had all that stuff.
The harsher, yeah, in the water.
But that, that was probably the biggest one, I think, I think has been approved.
And then, and then right around that time, that one in Smithfield.
Yeah, the Creekside Estates, they developed kind of a subdivision under the A-10 and then they rezoned it.
Andrew, can the county council do that?
I need to double check the timeline on, but yes.
I, I was wondering if the planning commissioner could bring a proposal to us, like if you guys could discuss it and say, would you set a moratorium? If Andrew says it's legal, like, would you give us the parameters?
I think what I'm saying, and I think they're.
I think we did it before.
They are right now.
We did it before, yeah.
Yeah, we have.
I think we have to say what the purpose of the moratorium is. And like, we can't just say a blanket moratorium, it's to put in place this.
I think we got sued out, too, right?
Yeah, it's like, we have to put the moratorium in.
Pass ordinance for a specific reason.
Yeah, I think that one.
I think we'd all be open to that if it's legal.
You just have to announce it in one, uh, in one of your actual council meetings.
Yeah, it would have to be brought to us in a form that we could legally pass, but I think we would be open to that. And Dirk, what did you?
I was just going to say that at least informally, I know our public works director has said, you know, Dirk, we should really think about talking to the council about a moratorium. I mean, just because they're overwhelmed, development services is overwhelmed, these sorts of, this is the most development we've been asked to even consider. It, it's just ramped up so much and so.
Yeah, I think you're going to see it more and more, right?
Yeah, let's start.
They saw how really easy it was to come in with a 20 lot subdivision.
Boom, one meeting, they bought that to when they developed three months.
Yeah, so I think you'll see more of it.
That's, that's the fast, that's like.
Many acres was it?
Two-hundred and seven.
So what would the process be, Andrew? Would it be, I don't, I don't know what direction to give.
I think, I think, look at our training that we had two months ago, what was that training down at the Riverwoods? Pretty much you guys just have to have it on your agenda that you're going to do one and what it's for and state it at your meeting and that. Anyone that comes in.
Attorneys.
It's just a one-sentence thing, basically. Yeah, it's pretty simple.
And it can just go directly, the council can just do it.
The attorneys will write it up.
Yep, you guys will have it on your agenda your next meeting.
Get an understanding of what we just talked about here and where we're going.
For me, the big one's the water.
Well, let's let, let's let Andrew.
Well, the lim, the limit, the limit is it can't be for 180 days, verified that. And then a county legislative body may without prior consideration of or recommendation from the planning commission, so can just go, right, do you enact an order to establish a ten, temporary land use regulation for any part of the area of the county of, make a finding of compelling count real interest or there's unrealized. So we can certainly look into doing this, but get, it's not going to exceed 180 days, so.
The code. And these, what these size and the amount we're getting is just really, it's testing the demands on the water, on everything. And we don't have code to say, to address those demands.
I, I like that idea. I think it makes sense to, let's look at it.
What parameters would we say? Would we say 10? Anything over 10 lot?
We could do subdivisions.
Correct.
Yeah.
I don't think you want to just do subdivisions because if there's a two lot subdivision, there's no need to hold them up. But let, yeah, let.
Critical size, if we said like 10, because that's, seems to be larger than what we typically have been seeing if.
Well, we didn't see them that often, but that was the largest one we had, but now they're just.
Yeah, it's also because we adopted the code that took away the sensitive areas from the net developable acreage in the A-10 zones.
Yeah, so that opened, opened a lot of scope of area too.
I, I think the concern with 10 different wells, 10, it's all the same concern, it's just a different quantity. So I'm good with the five, I mean, you know.
I am too.
Five?
Yeah. Because the point is anything that's larger scale than what we're, what we as an organization have intended would be a subdivision out, extended beyond the resources of the municipality in the unincorporated area. You know, anything over five is, is, is a pretty big impact on, on resources.
I can envision that hitting multiple different codes, you know, the road standard for sure. Maybe, maybe if we get these giant subdivisions out there, the road standard needs to be updated to include curb and gutter or what, you know, whatever, whatever might, because if we're.
Yeah.
Building, you know, that type of, of development, we probably need to be requiring those additional.
Water is the catalyst for the conversation, but the reality is all of the impacts of the development are what we need to be looking at.
Well, I just was wondering, one other part of it, uh, so we take our master plan. And in every one of these subdivisions, the staff's been very good about providing us a packet. This is the average lot sizes in the area. So you take this Mount Sterling area where you're an average five to eight acres. And then you're bringing this 20 lot and you're sticking them on one, one and a quarter acre lots. They're entitled to that because of their total acreage, but do we want that, is that our master plan to make another small mass right here? Or do we want to keep them spread out on comparable acreage that's?
The rest does become aggrimator, right?
Jason.
I was going to say, the, the rest has to be aggrimator though.
To me, that becomes a, that becomes a fire issue that we're dealing with in a bunch of areas. How, I mean, you start sending ti, water tenders out there, how do you fight the clustering of houses?
Well, past bankrupt, if you haven't seen the news last week.
Yeah.
So that's what's going to happen. And they had hydrants. So, I mean, you don't have hydrants and you put them together like that, I guarantee you, we can, we can barely handle one structured fire with the firefighters we have, let alone if we have two or three going at the same time.
Jason, they had hydrants, did they, was the reservoir just dry or was it?
No, they just, it went between the land, it was just perfect, perfect.
Nature one.
Yep, nature one on that, on the wind, and it just jumped from house to house to business to business and it just.
Do we already have in place an impact fee for a development like that that would allow for the, for the, like, it's going to cost us more for these things as a county to provide services?
Any impact fees?
County doesn't do impact fees.
Okay, okay.
And act impact.
What's you guys' thoughts on what I just, just, I mean, just real quick on what I presented? I mean, do you feel you need to review that? Do we want to stick with our master plan or we just want these clumps?
Well, the cluster is to, is intent of that is to leave larger parcels for ag purposes. Because that means that those, that remainder parcel can be farmed and cannot be developed. So I, I do like the intent of that and I do like to have that that.
You go to Northwest Smithfield and that same developer that started that, then he just comes back in and develops the rest of it later.
Well, and we're causing the issue of the fires we're talking here because in the county, we have, I mean, those two subdivisions, they're quite a ways away from the Wellsville Fire Department or the Hiram Fire Department. So if you get a wind and they get going in the cluster one up there in, in Lindley Basin, you got a problem.
Yeah, but who, I mean, we can't mitigate all fire everywhere.
No, but we can certainly talk about it as we're going.
Like our, our master plan, are we trying to preserve ag land? No one's going to farm five acres, right? They could have some horses, they could have a couple beef cows, my goat, something like that. They could have some horses, they could have a couple beef cows, my goat, something like that. But if we want to preserve ag land, clustering it restricts the rest of it to not be developed.
Well, it can't, but Smithfield, it didn't.
Well, because it became incorporated.
No.
No.
It's not incorporated at all, it's still counted.
It just had different zonings and how did that happen?
They found another loophole to jump through, to build more houses.
Maybe we need to.
But I think the discussion that we're having along water and, and that other infrastructure, you know, when you reach a certain scale of, of a subdivision, maybe it's, well, you need to have a, a state approved water system. You've got one well and a, and a delivery system, and it also requires fire.
Fire suppression.
Yeah.
Sprinkler systems.
All within a cluster area.
So let's start with a moratorium and then let's keep really working on those details. And let's, I think we need something.
And we need Development Services.
Yeah, we need Development Services to be involved. And, you know, I think, I don't know why we don't have impact fees. It's, to me, it seems like something like that should be, that's a question I don't have any knowledge about, so. Maybe there's a good reason we don't have it.
Then because, because some of the things you can use impact fees for, right? A city charges it for the sewer impact fee and some of the, the county, the only one is the road. And if there's road improvements that have to be done, you have to pay for those already.
So what would the impact fees pay for?
There's some of it, it can't just be you impacted us because of the services, because you have to spend it so quick and there's not a service to spend it on.
They have to pay for.
Yeah.
Got it.
And the problem is when you do impact fees and they turn it around, it's okay, then you're building.
Now you got to pay for it, yeah, so they.
All right, anybody else on that? We got one more thing to, we want to get an update.
Andrew had a point, didn't you?
So I just wanted to clarify, you wanted to do moratorium just on subdivisions over five lots at this point, right? I mean, Andrew could work on that, okay.
Of course, to clarify a code that, that works. Okay, an update on Powder Mountain and the master plan, can you do that in two minutes?
I might call up our consultant, JV, if you want to, in two minutes, because I'm not as familiar. But in the material that we did send you, there are some documents to talk about the timeline from when they initially started reviewing and the next steps. So you can see that Cache County, we've met with our consultant seven times, Powder Mountain once, Weber County and UDOT one time each. Powder Mountain also submitted kind of a historical timeline and next steps. And I think we're about three weeks difference on those, but pretty in line with the next steps. So next steps would be scheduling a preliminary meeting with Powder Mountain to review the findings, present official findings to them, present recommendations on management and subdivision remediation, allow them time to respond, then present draft development standards for review and process, et cetera, with the final vote on the master plan being late fall. Just to bring up some of the still outstanding concerns and incomplete items would be the traffic impact study had to be revised and sent back to UDOT. As we still have not heard back from UDOT on whether their traffic study is sufficient. The sheriff's department, local law enforcement still has not provided comments. And they may also need to update their interlocal agreement. County roads, we're waiting for comments on that. Additionally, the county road manual stipulates that there's multi-jurisdictional access. So access from another jurisdiction into a county project, that they need to meet the requirements of that other jurisdiction. We met with Weber County, there is only one access in and out of Powder Mountain, the state route, which is a concern, you know, in the summer with fires, because this is all in the wooey. Or in the winter, in the case of extreme events, it'd be very difficult to evacuate people. So we really want to get some feedback on that. Weber County believes that any development that would have happened in Cache County would have had access from Cache County. They were very surprised to learn that this master plan did not provide for that. They do meet regularly with Powder Mountain, but we're unaware of the scope of the master plan for the Cache County side. And so they had a lot of concerns about impacts to them, their services, et cetera, especially with only the one ingress egress.
Are you talking about Weber County or the fire district?
Weber County staff, development staff themselves. Yeah, Weber County Fire and Cache County Fire, they've been meeting separately and working through interlocal updates as well as staffing issues and the like. There's also stormwater management would be through Cache County side. But all the information that they have shows it would be part of their water and sewer district. And then, as I mentioned, wildfire management. Somebody mentioned to me that I should address a reservoir rumor that Powder Mountain was doing that. Our consultant met with their water and sewer district, actually just today. And, yeah, there's no plans for that. They do have large tanks to provide storage, but, yeah, a reservoir was not part of the plan. But we will get more information on that, but it seems like they do have enough water rights to, and wet water to supply the build out of the Cache County master plan as well as still servicing the Weber County side, so. That was a quick, hopefully, two minute update.
Yeah. Brian, do you have anything that you wanted to add from JUB or?
No, thank you, I think Angie covered everything.
Okay.
So I have a question. So we're talking, the higher subdivision was talking about access, one ingress, egress. Here, that's mentioned in Powder Mountain, how come that's not being discussed as far as egress? Based on the number of units they're going to put in up there?
I think because at this point, we're just a master plan, I think that's what's been brought in, getting the master plan process. And so Angie, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, but I think it's something that can be brought in, but it makes it complicated, we're part of it from Weber's side and our side as well, but Angie, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that.
I would say also there hasn't been a larger discussion. They've tried to keep us more focused on just the master plan and development and not wider impacts to our neighboring county, et cetera. They believe, and they've mentioned in the past, that if the master plan and that gets approved, well, you know, that's UDOT's problem to figure out how to provide the volume and improvements to the state route for the approved development. So that's again, why we want to make sure that we loop in Weber County, make sure they're fully aware, address this ingress egress issue because, again, it's, it's a pretty significant when built out. Even if they did just the density units at one, single family home for the nine-hundred-and-forty, that's nine-hundred-and-forty-seven homes, so. It's going to be a very large, and yeah, if we're worried about thirty homes on the Hiram substandard road.
I don't see how that doesn't meet the same bounds.
I think, at least when they explained it before, and again, this has been a few meetings ago, is what they, partly is they're going to have onsite fire, right? And that was part of it, right? Ours is to get fire in and out of that subdivision. If they're already onsite with their fire, but again, this was, this is maybe a year ago when we talked about it. I don't remember all of it, but it seemed like that was some of it, is, is you weren't getting the other fire in there.
Emergency natural disaster, you have to have an ingress and egress, how does that go?
Yes.
It's natural, natural disaster, a site fire then, right? That's what I thought the law said.
But that comes after the master plan, right? That comes later.
There's two codes to consider, there's fire code and then, I don't know what to call if it's roads manual or just state code that says that the public works director has the ability to basic, he needs to consider general public health and safety issues with access. So he has the right to say, ooh, general, you know, public health and welfare.
Weber County needs to get out more if they thought there was access from Cache County.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they just need to.
I don't think they thought there was, they said there will be if there is, yeah.
Angie, thank you for the timeline, that, that surprises me that it will be next fall before we think we're done. But I also am really glad we're looking at all of those issues, so.
Yeah, I think the master plan document will have a lot of conditions of approval to kind of address some of these outstanding issues and to make sure that they are addressed before we get any development plan applications or processing.
Perfect. Okay, thank you, everyone, for being here. Yeah, thank you to our planning commissioners, we really depend on you guys. We appreciate you.
Chair, we're, we're a little behind on the timeline. Could we request monthly updates on the status of Powder Mountain?
Yes. Angie, could we, could we ask to get a monthly update on the status of, of what your, your meetings with JUB? Or even maybe, will you let Andrew know when you have in those meetings? Maybe a council member could, we could all take turns coming to one of them and asking questions and being a part of that?
Yeah, we typically have weekend checked-in meetings on Thursday afternoons. It's usually on Zoom, so that probably gets you all involved as well.
Well, actually, we're not the ones that are going to approve it, it's going to be our planning commissioner. So hopefully you guys are in part of those meetings, so.
Yes, we can definitely get updates.
Thank you, okay. All right, we'll see you back here in eight minutes. We're at another meeting.